Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I was about to um. I was about to call you because I realized that we had not. Yeah, the Zoom info.
All good.
Apologies for that.
No worries. Here now, so it's all good.
Good, good. All right, um, let's see. I think Commissioner Marcela, Kayla is going to be late in joining us. And have you met Chris Floyd yet, our legal counsel? Chris Floyd has joined us.
Morning, Catherine.
Good morning. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, too. And one of the reasons I'm on, too, is in my former life, I was an employment civil rights and commercial litigator, and also have substantive experience with employment relations and stuff, so. Might have some insights on on the thing. I will say, I reviewed your comments and stuff, your spreadsheet with the comments. Commissioner Marcela sent those to me this morning. And they all seemed really spot on and picked up on a lot of things that I had expressed earlier needed to be revised. So thank you for that.
Great, yeah. It's very great to have multiple heads together for this. I appreciate you being here as well.
Catherine, how do you want to start the review here? What would work best for feedback for you?
Um, so my thought is I can go ahead and share my screen. We can start at the top and just run through the comments and discuss some of the outstanding items that I had. But I know that you also had a chance to review. So if there's any specific questions or comments that you have as well, we can definitely pause at those sections also. So does that sound like a plan with us, Tim?
Yeah, that'd be great. And I know Commissioner Marcela sent over her document with her comments, too. So I don't know if you want to pull that one up that also includes yours, or I can go through it as you. Go through your document and kind of note those as we get there.
Yeah, if you want to share that, then we can all be working off the same thing. I think that'd be great.
Okay. Why don't I, why don't I share, what, let me send it to you if she didn't include you on that, so that you can make your own notes and keep a working. Working draft. Hold on, let me check that. I'm going to go back to my.
And folks, while Commissioner might just, I just want to let you, I'm going to turn my video off. My internet is not happy this morning, so it keeps, y'all are already freezing up on me. And I find that if I don't have my video on, that seems to reduce that issue. So I'm here, I'm just not going to be.
Okay.
Smiling.
I could turn off mine, too. It looks like I just woke up and I've been up since like four o'clock. Like, oh, man.
I'm totally fine with that. If we want to do a video off meeting and have the screen share, we could totally do that.
That works for me. I have to eat breakfast still, so.
All right.
There you go.
Okay, yeah, it doesn't look like, all right, here we go. Catherine, I'm going to forward this to you. And. All right, my email takes 12 seconds to go through, so.
Got it.
Be just a moment.
Okay, cool. Well, does any, like, overall initial thoughts while that's coming through that you can share? What were your overall impressions of the first draft?
I, I have not made it through the entire draft, but I did notice I really liked some of, I mean, like Krista, just generally the clarity on the language. And then I noticed, um, you know, there were some clear expectations and like consequences to failing to meet some of those expectations outlined that I thought were probably helpful items for us to consider including.
Great.
Yeah, and this is Chris. I'll apologize. I, Kayla just sent me her draft this morning, so I haven't had a chance to look through the revised draft either. But my plan would be to try to do that perhaps over the weekend and insert any other comments I had, but and circulate it back to you. So that's, that's kind of where I am.
Got it. Okay, great. All right, so can everyone see my screen with the draft pulled up with the comments that we'll go through?
Yep.
Excellent. All right. So I think the, the first place to start is with these employee status definitions. And we originally had this conversation just in clearly defining which employees would be eligible for which benefits and just making sure that this section is dialed so that employees have a clear understanding of what they're eligible for. So the, the way that I understand it is that there are four, sorry, five, or could be five employment classes, regular, full time, regular three quarters time, regular part time, seasonal temp, and occasional. I believe the way that this was originally structured, it was more of definition. So in my mind, and you can correct me if I'm interpreting this wrong, that department directors and elected officials, those aren't technically employment classifications for the purpose of determining benefits. I believe, and you can correct me, is that those folks would fall under the regular full time employee classification. So, yeah, I just want to pause here. And does it make sense how I've outlined this to provide some more clarity around employment classifications? Or were there any additional tweaks to this section that you feel we should make?
I'm not sure if I'm understanding your question correctly, but the benefits are applied to, I believe most benefits are applied to folks who work 30 plus hours. And then the PTO is an additional benefit for 40. But maybe, I think that's also something that we want to discuss. Perhaps revising a little bit.
Sure. Yeah, and the PTO is it's been a minute since I looked at this. It's in accrual, correct?
Yeah, there's a vacation accrual.
Yep.
And then no, I don't, I can't remember what the other personal time is, how that's accrued, paid personal leave.
Yep, so this one's in accrual, the vacation, and then the pay, the personal was a lump sum. So that's where, yeah, having these employment status definitions in the, in the leave policies is important. So you know who you're offering these to. So if we wanted to remove regular three quarters time, if you are, if it is pretty much everyone over 30 hours a week, that would be getting these benefits. If that's the direction that you move, then we can definitely get rid of this regular three quarter time status definition and just consolidate those. And it would be regular full time would be anyone regularly scheduled at least 30 hours a week and just kind of clean that up. But if you want that ability to to clearly define that folks working less than 30, but maybe more than just in this other tier, then, yeah, then that's where you'd want to separate those out. So sounds like something you might not have a decision right now, but something you'll be considering for the, and you'll get comments back to me. Is that right?
Yeah, I think so. And, and, and Chris, maybe chime in. I think we've run into questions or kind of challenges here with perhaps recruitment and retention of folks who, I mean, and just balancing that, you know, how many hours a week they're available or want to work versus, you know, trying to retain folks and attract them with benefit, you know, the full benefit package as well. I'm not sure we really have had much of a discussion over what we think we might do. Go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, and this is, this was actually early, one of the things, oh, can you hear me? My internet connection is kind of coming and going. The this is one that is I've originally flagged with concern because I think it does, it does lend itself for some ambiguity and confusion. I agree that probably it'd be good to make a decision as to, you know, what you want to classify a full time employee as versus having these different categories and stuff like that. Because I do think it, and, and, you know, having these different categories and have, you know, your department directors and other folks onboarding. You want to have the message be as simple as possible, but so that the people giving that message to candidates and stuff can give it consistently. So there is no confusion as to what the status will be.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I would fully agree with that. The simpler that you can make it, although the employee handbook has some legal verbiage in it, it is also primarily a resource for employees. So, yeah, I think the simpler you can make it. Totally agree with you there.
Is that, is this a big? I'm thinking part of this consideration is maybe kind of a number crunch on the compare, cost comparison to then offering employees benefits over 30 hours versus you know, having them working 40 hour, I mean, I don't know, to me, to me, the flexibility is probably really nice to have it at 30. But are there thoughts from the group on why we might not consider that and keep it at 40?
Well, this is Chris. Let's go say you can, you can define who's eligible for your benefits based on the number of hours per week worked without having to reflect that in your classification. So, for example, if you were to decide to get rid of your three quarter time classification and just have, you know, regular full time employees or those who are regularly scheduled year round to work in maybe instead of say, at least up, you know, up to 40 hours a week or something like that, however, whatever you decide is your category for a full time employee. But then for your benefits thing, you can, you can define it that, you know, any employees who work over thirds or something like that. So, you know, it's, that can provide you some more flexibility that way as well. Catherine, what do you think?
So you're saying that we would keep the, the employment class as regular full time and then up to a certain number of hours and then specifically define based on hours within the leave or the benefit policies, who would be eligible?
You could, if, if they weren't the same, like if the county decided, you know, okay, we want to consider, we want them to be folks who work, you know, 40 hours a week, but for benefits, we'll let folks who work 32 hours a week qualify.
Yep.
Yeah. Well, maybe we can just highlight that, Catherine, um, for additional review, that 40 hour versus, you know, what?
Got it.
Thank you.
You got it.
And, and sorry, this is just, so I mean, we can call everyone regular full time, but then some of the benefits may, like, if you're working 30, you're either, you might actually lose some eligibility for some benefits, or it might be prorated in some way or something like that. Is that, is that kind of where, and, and we need to do our homework on sort of what the cost implications of that might be.
Yeah, I believe, sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I, I believe Jeff, it's, and I, and for some reason, I can't ever get it straight, whether it's 30 or 32. Gives people the eligibility for benefits, but only if you work 40 hours a week, are you able to take advantage of the paid personal time off that we and that's the only, I think that's the only difference right now.
All right. All right, so moving on to the next comment.
Well, though, just while we, I mean, Catherine, I'm not sure we answered your first question about, I mean, whether we even need to pull out department directors and elected officials, especially if we're going to go to the more flexible definition of regular full time. Maybe we can just like delete that highlighted section, calling out department directors and elected officials.
Yeah, I think, oh, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry. I was just, I should mute myself. I just said, oh.
Yeah, I think maybe there is an appropriate place for this to live under maybe a different heading. It's not an employment classification, but it can be another definition that you provide. Because I think it is still good information to include. But, yeah, I would agree that maybe this isn't the place specifically that it needs to live. Especially this kind of ties to this question I have down here is, are these sorry, employees always, are they always full time? Are they always, and then there was some other verbiage about them always that they were exempt. So I wanted to make sure if they're not always fitting into those categories of full time, regular, or exempt, then, yeah, I would agree maybe that those definitions just live in its own section, just more for information.
Yeah, sorry, this was Chris. I, in, I can't tell when people started, stopped talking, so I apologize for talking over top of somebody. But that was part of my concern, too, is including the definitions in that first, you know, regular full time employees thing, you know, if the only, you know, the primary reason for setting out those folks is because they are exempt, then I think it makes more sense to have them in the exempt category and not laid out under the regular full time employee definition.
Noted. All right. So are, let's see, I think we're on to this category of the hiring processes. So I know this was something, yep, hiring promotions and transfers. I know this was something that was originally brought up, that you wanted a little bit more. I know this was something that was originally brought up that you wanted a little bit more detail and expectations on what the hiring procedures are, and especially for different types of employees, whether, you know, what the responsibilities are. So just tried to clean up this language here and just kind of step by step outline what the, um, the roles of a, of an individual who is making a hire would be. The one comment I had here is just to be careful with regards to making job offers and making sure that their completion of required background checks and testing is, um, is complete before they actually begin work.
Yeah, and, and I was going to suggest give yourself even more flexibility by instead of having an offer will be made, you might want to say an offer may be made contingent on the status criteria. Because it very well could be that not everyone will be subject to background checks and testing.
Yep.
And so that also provides you more flexibility.
Great. Noted. All right.
Any, um, any place to include, um, any penalties? Should we not? Well, no, I'm sorry. I guess maybe that's in the, that, that would be further down in the, some other areas of, of not following onboarding and HR practices.
Um, yeah, I, I mean, I think it might be covered in other areas, but if you really want to drive that point home, I don't see any reason, just to reiterate that, like, the reason that we follow these policies is to create a fair and equitable hiring process for internal and external candidates. And it is the responsibility of hiring managers to follow these, and failure to do so could result in disciplinary action. So yeah, I think if that's a, a point you really want to drive home, I don't see any reason that we wouldn't want to include that.
Okay, I would, I would definitely note and advocate to include that, um, and at this point too.
Got it.
Okay.
All right. Um, and then it looks like Kayla, there are a couple of comments here. We might want to include the drug testing program we have for safety-sensitive positions. There is the policy included, I believe, on the drug and alcohol test, or drug and alcohol policy, including testing. Was that right? Yep, drug and alcohol-free workplace. So I might, we could also, if, if that's a preference, we can reference that drug and alcohol policy for more information. I might not double, um, include all of the detailed information in both places, but yeah, we can definitely reference that. I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, for she's referring to public works and, you know, heavy equipment.
Yep.
That's, that's, yeah.
Yeah, the CDL specifics.
Yep.
Got it. Okay. And then can we get some examples of one where it could be necessary for us to have a physical done, a medical inquiry or examination? Yeah, so same, oh, go ahead.
I was just saying, I wouldn't recommend putting specific examples of, of the positions just because, again, you want to keep as much flexibility as possible and things change. You know, you want to make sure that this is somewhat of a living document, but you don't want to have to change it like every month once a new employment law goes into effect or something like that. So
Yep.
I, I think that's, that's something that might be more appropriate with job descriptions and stuff than listing out in the handbook which positions may be subject to the, the physical.
Sure. Yeah, I would agree with that. Great. Um, moving expenses.
Yeah.
We might want to rethink this. I would be willing to negotiate this for higher-ranking positions like manager. Um, yeah, this is, I think, on, on your guys' end, uh, what your decision is here. If you want to have some discussion on this now or, or offline?
Yeah, well, and I, I think everybody, well, maybe, um, I don't know if, uh, Mr. Feedler's will, but there have been some questions, you know, there have been situations where in order to attract an appropriate candidate, they may not necessarily be local and, and therefore if they're relocating from different states or such that, you know, it might be a part of the negotiation to assist them with some relocation costs and all. So I, I would tend to agree that the commissioners should reconsider whether they want to have an absolute prohibition on paying moving expenses just because of the realities of attracting the right candidates to, to Lake County.
Yeah, I would, I would agree. I, I, I would suggest we just not reference that perhaps at all to give us some flexibility. Would that be fair, Chris?
Yeah, I, I, I was going to say, you know, it's obviously, it's not a required provision, and so you might want to just not have it. So you have the, the opportunity to consider it on a case-by-case basis.
Perfect. All right, I will remove that. Um, the probation period, so this, we would recommend removing the verbiage around the probationary period, just because there are, I don't know if you had a chance to read that article for some background context, but there are some implications. An employee might view a probationary period as something that could lead into a contract. And once they fill their probation, then they are, you know, bound to the position. And then that creates that implied contract. So for that reason, um, I recommend removing this whole section. I think you can, for certain benefits, I think it's totally appropriate, you know, having that waiting period and perhaps highlighting it something than probation period, but like a waiting period for benefits is, is appropriate. What are your thoughts on, on my recommendations here, just to remove this probation period section?
This is Chris. I absolutely agree.
Me too.
Excellent. We will.
I do.
Yeah, I will say that I think my impression, um, over the last four years at the county is that this probationary period may have been included and intended to help with disciplinary action or, or evaluations and performance. And given some more, I don't know if, if it's, you know, confidence or flexibility, but, um, you know, being an outwell employer and hoping, you know, with a, um, sorry, with a county manager coming on and, and some better operational structure internally, we, yeah, we, we, I mean, I agree, we don't need this, but if there's other ways to strengthen, which we'll get to, you know, disciplinary action or evaluation, uh, expectations.
Or, yeah, and, and you could, you could like put something, and I think part of it is, you know, the whole notion of probation, probation, you know, everybody who's familiar with, with the general use of the word probation usually interprets it to mean that once I complete my probation, I'm good, you know, kind of thing. So it, I think it's, you know, there's nothing wrong with having a review period or something like an acclamation period. I've, I've seen it, you know, that, but I think if you, if you want to keep that type of a provision in here, you could put it in, in the, um, you know, the disciplinary policy or something, but just also to make sure it's clear that, that it does not infer, you know, or change the outwell employment nature, you know?
Right. Right.
All right, sounds like we're in alignment on that one. Remote work, does this matter if DHS is going to be fully remote? Could other departments do that as well? Could you provide a little background on, on what her comments, what the comments are there?
Um, let's see. So I think maybe the hang-up there is just the inclusion of the word temporary remote work policy. Because some, you know, through 2020, some, uh, units of certain departments have, or, uh, the intention is to have moved to a more permanent, um, structure of remote working. So maybe that's, that's just part of it, because, because, uh, some of the services with DHS and caseworking is now fully remote, though others in like child, um, welfare still are, are in the building, but by appointment.
Got it. Yeah, so I think, I think an easy way just to clean that up is perhaps just removing this first line and then saying, and, and the word temporary here and just saying telecommuting arrangements may be approved on a full-time, part-time or temporary basis at the discretion of, and then just keeping that again, kind of loose for you to, um, to interpret based on department, um, however it makes sense, but just so we still include this, these, these guidelines. But yeah, how it's actually applied based on position, it would be at, at your discretion.
That sounds reasonable.
Cool.
Oops, sorry.
Well, just I, like that first sentence, it, it, I mean, we're in sort of the COVID provisions now, but I wonder if we want to change that sentence to be rather than effective immediately, just be like, you know, the, the, the county, you know, may institute temporary remote work policies, you know, in the event of public health emergent, you know, public health or other emergencies, you know, just kind of.
Yeah, I, that's the same thing I was going to say. I, I, because again, this is, this is going to be your published and recorded handbook. It, and so, you know, I, I think you might want to, want to just incorporate it or revise it to essentially say that, you know, the county, the county, you know, may institute remote working policies or something like that based on needs, and I'm not wordsmithing this well, but, you know, but just so that it's not effective immediately and until further notice. Because then as soon as we hope to come out the other side of this pandemic, you're going to have to, to revise your handbook.
Yep.
I also wonder about if, if it makes sense in here to reference continuation of operations planning, coop, coop planning through emergency management and somehow requiring or setting the expectation of directors and elected officials that they need to participate in that planning and, um, have an updated plan. John? Okay, I kicked that guy out.
Yeah, not sure who that was.
Um, yeah, I mean, I would, I don't know if that would necessarily fall under the remote work, um, policy, but I think there could certainly be perhaps even its own, its own heading on continuing operations and just a, a brief statement on the role of employees in that process. All right. Um, regarding performance evaluations, just adding some, some language, um, putting, using the word generally just in case an employee happens to, to fall through the cracks, hopefully that doesn't happen, but just putting some broader language here. And then I know that multiple positions within the county was one of the, um, the topics that you had brought up, both employees working multiple jobs, I think, in and out of the county as well as within. So I would love your thoughts on how I crafted this. And kind of if this is the policy that you might normally be following, if an employee wants to hold two positions, how that works with, of course, there's considerations if they're exempt or if they're holding two non-exempt positions. So yeah, what were your thoughts on this verbiage?
Well, this is Chris. I know we've had situations where, um, for example, someone might have, you know, a regular job with the county during the day and then perhaps work for the rec department at night, like at the ball fields or something to that effect. And so I think that's, that's the example I think that, that Kayla, um, had brought up or wanted to discuss. And, and I think it's, you know, it, it's the question of, uh, whether the two jobs they're doing, if they're related enough that, that the Department of Labor would look at it as an extension of, you know, the same job, if you will. Or if they're totally different, like for, if you have somebody who's like working in the finance department during the day, but then does a couple of hours, you know, working at the ballparks at night, that might be different enough that it's not, you know, it's not an extension of their normal duties, essentially.
Yep.
Where it wouldn't trigger the requirement for overtime. But I, I think you, you, obviously, I think this is something where you would need to determine it on a case-by-case basis. And so I'm, you know, I'm a little uncomfortable with getting too much detail into the handbook on this just because it, it may, it, you'll have to look at it for each position.
Yep. Yeah, that, that makes sense, and that's kind of where it ended up wrapping up towards the end here is anyone seeking to hold multiple positions must obtain approval, um, from their director and the HR department, follow standard hiring processes. So yeah, I think if that is your preference, um, we can remove most of this and just keep it a more general statement of what the considerations might be and that it is treated on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, and, and just so, Catherine, you probably have this, but, um, the FLSA, there's a regulation that specifically addresses this with state or local government employees. It, that, it's, um, section five fifty-three, um, point three oh, that addresses occasional or sporadic employment where they, you know, they, you know, not as, as a like permanent situation, but where they, you know, like I said, once in a while might work at the ballpark or something like that. Um, so that, and, and for the commissioners, I can, I addressed this packing two thousand and eighteen. Okay.
All right.
So I was going to say, I can forward this to y'all as well. It just gives additional information on, uh, kind of guidance on how that would apply. But that's, you know, that's more, I think, of the situations that have come up with the county where, you know, it's not, not a long-term or, or regular arrangement. It's more of a seasonal, if you will.
Got it. Okay. Noted. Um, I will definitely review that and then clean this up a bit and make it, um, a bit more general. Um, and then it'll really fall to the, the supervisor and the HR department and payroll on how that would actually be implemented. So, great. All right.
It looks, hi Kayla.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Hey.
We are just moving forward on, uh, probably things that we should get together and talk in greater detail about, but we're just working through the doc. And for your awareness, we've had a couple, um, uh, maybe public, public attendee bombs so far that I've had to kick out of the meeting.
That's okay. No worries.
All right. So interim upgrades, employees may temporarily resign to other positions. Lake County may increase the rate of pay for individuals. And the comment here is we usually did one ninety for temporary supervisor pay. Not sure if we could include that here. My recommendation would be to leave that out. Um, the specifics, again, going back to, to what Chris said, is this is a, um, a document that you don't necessarily want to include as many specific details because that might be subject to change and you don't want to find yourself needing to update that as frequently. So my recommendation would be to leave that verbiage as is.
I'm sorry, guys, for catching up late. Um, I, um, just wanted to also ask quickly about, um, like that piece. Like, would we, would we then have a separate policy for temporary supervisor or interim upgrade pay? For instance, Catherine, like where we would say, you know, in, in the case where your supervisor has an extended period of leave, you may be eligible for an interim pay upgrade, and here's how that works, and here's how the upgrade is, is done. Would we would we want to do something separately like that? My my concern with something like that is just that it's not ever been done consistently across the board. Um and I just don't want us to get into a position where it's expected and then there's not any continuity of how that's been done.
Yeah, I definitely understand where you're coming from there, and I agree, it could be a separate document that, you know, it's a compensation philosophy or compensation planning. Um then, yeah, then I think that would be appropriate for for it to live there. Um, yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Thank you.
I agree with that.
All right. Um disciplinary action should should specify employment agreement, not necessarily specifically a situation in public health. Um Kayla, do you want to elaborate on your comment here?
So you cut up just a little bit at the end, Catherine, what did you, what'd you say about my comment? Just elaborate on it?
Yeah, if you just wanted to share the context of that of that comment there.
Yeah, sure. So we've uh we, in a couple situations where we've had maybe potential like um, I don't necessarily want to call them conflicts, but like if you have an outside, like you're an entrepreneur outside of your general employment, um you know, and we have an employment agreement specific with that, um or or that's been kind of brought up previously um with our with H R recently about, you know, maybe we could establish guidelines between your entrepreneurial um personal endeavors and your scope of employment. And so I don't know if that creates any kind of sticky situation with disciplinary action or or anything like that, or I don't know, Chris, you, I think, Chris, you helped us a little bit on that employment agreement. Do you think that that could be a potential conflict in this area?
Well, no, because it's, I think the disciplinary action aspect applies to an employment uh to an employee regardless of whether they have an ancillary contractual arrangement with the county to provide services that aren't related to their normal employment. And so I, you know, I think that's more, what you're talking about is more of a conflict of interest issue um than a disciplinary issue.
Okay, that makes sense.
That's, yeah, and so we could, we could address that in that way in terms of conflicts of interest um versus disciplinary issue. Cause you know, if they, for example, if they fail to perform appropriately under their contract, that doesn't trigger disciplinary action for their other work, you know? It 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 would trigger potentially a breach of contract issue um where the county could terminate their contract, but it wouldn't necessarily have, or it shouldn't technically have an impact on their regular employment with the county.
Okay, that makes sense.
All right.
Can I make, just a quick comment on the, sorry, back to the interim pay that I thought of. Um, I think maybe to wherever we better outline that, wh- whichever document. Um it uh it's it's, it may have been originally intended or or maybe generally best practices are in, this is intended to be applied where there might be a vacancy in a supervisory position and somebody is asked to like step up. But I, but it's used now in the county, like when people are on vacation or out for, you know, like a shorter period of time. So we might wanna try to just differentiate the the use there.
Sure. Yeah, that makes sense. Is there um, again, we can use more general language. Like generally, a temporary reassignment might be for a period of more than a certain number of days. Is that a way that you might want to define that? That way, it's not like a week's vacation or even a two weeks vacation. Would there be like a typical, something in excess of a month? Um or, oh, go ahead.
I I wouldn't recommend tying yourself into that. I think I think the way where it says, you know, employees may temporarily be assigned and the Lake County may incre- you know, leave yourself as much flexibility as possible to address these issues. Because it, a lot of it will depend on, like Catherine, you said, i- is it a vacancy? Is it, you know, an essential employee who needs to be on leave of some type, whether it's paid or, you know, vacation or otherwise? Um, yeah, I think this is another one of the situations where you want to be able to analyze it on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, and but and maybe moving forward as we talk through this with elected officials and directors, if the board decides that we're not going to do this for, you know, a three-day period or something, or we'll 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 try it better defined, because I think it it'll, yeah, this is just another area where we'll have to make, provide that clarity, I think, is how people are gonna, yeah, apply it.
All right. Let's see, do we, or could we have forms that might accompany this to have written documentation of these instances that is consistent? Um, so it's not, I wouldn't typically include this type of form in an employee handbook, but I um certainly would recommend any sort of like a form that you could use consistently for documentation. Um, I've seen various types of these in other organizations, and I'd be, if you don't have anything in place already, I would be happy to um do a little research and find some samples for you. So I don't think it's necessarily something we need to include in the employee handbook, but I would certainly think it would be a good resource to use for supervisors when they are um issuing disciplinary action and and written statements and things like that. Is that what you were going for there or getting to with that comment, Kayla?
Um, yeah, um, so I think we've come up with a or come across situations where we could pick like three or four of these off this list that, you know, this employee's conduct violated. But we've struggled really dif- really hard with figuring out how to document that and then um document it in the form of like progressionary discipline or something like that. Um, or or understanding where it crosses the line to go from, you know, maybe just a suspension without pay to a full dismissal type of thing. And so I think we just kind of, I think for me, it would be really helpful if we had kind of a uniformed way um to to assist directors through the disciplinary process. Because I think it can be very confusing and each director has a tendency to do it differently, and and I think if we had some uniformity there um for us, it would be really helpful and and help limit our risk and liability. I don't, Chris, I don't know if you have anything to add to that.
I was gonna let you finish and just say, and especially given the wide variety of different levels of expertise and handling HR matters across the different departments and and elected offices and stuff, I highly recommend forms for this kind of stuff, because it, one of the biggest pitfalls you have with disciplinary action is consistency and especially consistency in applying disciplinary action with folks who may be in protected classes under Title VII. Um, so, yeah, no, I I highly agree that there should be some standardized forms created for certain actions. Um, you know, disciplinary action terminations, you know, I know there there's a form that's used now that probably needs some updating as well. But um, yeah, no, I agree, but that's, I I agree with Catherine, that that's not something you should publish in your handbook.
Okay, that makes a lot of sense. I just think it would be really helpful for us to maybe make a checklist of things we'd like to set up processes for from the policy um to have some of that uniformity.
Right.
Great. All right, so that looks like it's tied to the previous comment. Um, any suggestions on who this is should be, maybe change this to a deputy attorney? So it looks like maybe just some comments between your team on who would actually be participating in this conflict resolution panel. Um, I will, just for the sake of time, if you want to have that discussion and and just get back to me on who you would like me to drop in there, I think that would be great. Oh, go ahead.
I was just like, so just just a note on that, it would depend on, you know, having your county attorney or the deputy county attorney on this type of a conflict resolution panel. The one conflict it sets up is that um it it potentially turns them into a witness if the the affected employee decides to file some sort of a claim going forward. Um, now, the, what that means is that if, you know, i- i- any any type of of situation where you have both employees and representatives in the employer present and participating, it's not protected by attorney-client privilege. Um, and so that that's something to really think through if you want to continue to have. You know, I know that y'all have appointed me to the conflict resolution panel for that, and I think it's just more clarity as to how you expect that panel to operate.
Chris, could we maybe put in there, because I don't think we have a designation anywhere that I can remember of who the privacy officer is, and I had assumed, I think, from when the original handbook was written back in twenty fourteen, it was um Colleen Nielsen, because she was the Director of Public Health and um was pretty well versed in HIPAA regulations. Um, although I don't have any understanding of why that would be tied to disciplinary actions or whatever. Um, but I I was wondering, could we put like the county manager in there?
I'm ready to say is that, you know, y'all are getting ready to embark on on engaging a county manager. And so I I think that might make sense to have them. A- and maybe perhaps designate, what you could do as well is designate the county manager as the county, or their designee. You know, you could appoint county manager or their designee as the county's privacy officer. And so that way, if they come in and decide, or if they're involved in the issue, that they would want to designate someone else to serve in that role.
Okay, that makes a lot of sense. I agree with that.
All right. Um personnel files, all requests for employment information about present or former employee of the county shall be referred to HR. Should this be reflected in the QRA request? Can you provide some some context on that?
Yeah, so I think we'd, we, I reached out to um uh Erin Smith, who had some examples of a a public records request policy that um she had done for Park County. She previously did work for us as our land use attorney. And so in in twenty twenty, I had reached out for her for some examples on that policy that she had in place for public records requests for Park County, and she's gonna send a template over. And so I was wondering if this needs to have some language in it to link it to that core request. Um, because I think that there are some things in the in the personnel file that might get requested out of there, and and for from time to time, that has been the case. Um, like an, like an employee's performance evaluation or something like, you know, you'll have a disgruntled constituent come in and ask for um, you know, performance evaluation for the road supervisor, because they're not plowing the roads appropriately. And they they want to see if it's, you know, a situation with nepotism or something like that. And um, I just am wondering if it would be applicable to reference that so that employees know what is or is not eligible for a core request.
He, and so, you know, the thing is, is that application of QRA and whether something is subject to an exemption can be a pretty complicated um analysis. So, you know, I I don't think you want to suggest that if somebody wants a a person, a reference, if somebody asks for a reference and that their new employer, if you will, provides them with a form for the release of information, that then that new employer would have to submit a core request. Um, I I don't think you need to go down that complicated of a path. Um, but I think it's it's more of a instruction to your department heads and elected officials that requests for information need to be vetted, you know, and that's why it says, you know, shall be referred to human resources. So somebody besides the person who receives it lays eyes on it and says, okay, this is subject to an exception or no, we can provide this, or one of the other a- aspects of QRA is in some instances, you have to redact certain information. So that that's something I I think, um, you know, I I think that's that's just something you want to, again, allow yourself as much flexibility as possible. I like that, you know, it says, it's an absolute, you know, any request for information shall be referred to human resources. And then, you know, part of it is training, and and one of the things I was gonna mention after this, and I'm sure Catherine is thinking the same. Once y'all are ready to roll this out, we need to have a a training session with the department heads and elected officials to go through this, to explain some of these components to them, and to make sure they understand that they need to use the Human Resources Department as a resource when employment issues come up so that they're not unilaterally making decisions out as to how things should be handled.
Agreed. Yep, I, yeah, fully support that. And I think that would help with, when you say that there are some inconsistencies in how decision-making is applied or disciplinary action is applied, if you're tapping into your Human Resources Department as a partner in those situations, then that will help to, um, where we don't have as much, where you don't have as many very specific policies and you want to keep them broader, using your consistent HR department will help you to apply those consistently. So, yeah, fully support that. All right, um, I just wanted to, before we dive into the next section, um, I'm happy to continue meeting. I know we're almost at the end of the hour. So um, I guess, do we want to continue moving right along? Should we schedule another follow-up meeting to dive into some of these, to keep kind of the process going as we are doing right now? Um, I just want to be respectful of your time and and make sure that we are all on the same page and kind of either taking more time now or or perhaps setting a follow-up.
I have time now.
Okay.
I I I have to hop off to, or be like pretty soon to get to a nine-thirty appointment elsewhere. Um, but I I feel like I'm like I'm so new to the county, I'm not sure I'm adding much at this point to this conversation. So I'm 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 super happy for you guys to keep going if if everyone has time.
Well, the the only thing I would say, Jeff, is I think you're now the one who's gonna be supervising human resources until the county manager is aboard, and so I think it, I think it might help for you to be involved in the full conversation.
If we need to, if Jeff needs to go and we need to um push, push this and and circle back to it next week, I can, I think we can do that too. I'm pretty open. Whatever works best for everyone.
Yeah, same here, I'm flexible.
Uh, well, if Jeff needs to get off sooner than later, why don't we spend a few minutes here scheduling a follow-up?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And um let's see. I think our calendars may be relatively open, dare I say. Um, do we want to look at next, next week I'm looking at, but um if we want to kind of get back to it with this fresh in our minds, Tuesday through, would Tuesday through Thursday work for folks?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have to, Sarah, I'm, I have a chunk of time blocked out on Wednesday, but um for the eye doctor, but I have to cancel that now because Riley's on quarantine.
Oh, all right.
So I'm, I'm, I have like a huge, huge chunk of time Wednesday that I'm open if we wanted to try to go from like ten to eleven-thirty on Wednesday.
Unfortunately, my Wednesday morning, well, actually, I'm, I've got meetings scheduled Wednesday through to at least two, two-thirty, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. Um, what about Tuesday, Tuesday afternoon?
Well, let me check on that. Yeah, I'm open.
Yeah, that's fine for me.
I would be free anytime after. I would be free anytime after three-thirty. I wonder if like three-thirty to five might work?
I could make that work.
Yeah.
Great.
Kayla, does that work okay with you and kids and whatnot?
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
Okay. All right, let's, does that work for you, Chris?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. And what I'll try to do then is over the weekend, I'll try to go through the Kayla's marked up version and perhaps add some comments so that y'all have those in advance and might help move things along a little quicker than me interrupting y'all throughout the conversation.
Oh, that's, that sounds fine. I'll, I'll shoot out a real quick uh calendar invite just to block that for us. Um, and then we can, um, uh, Catherine, we'll put out, we'll, we'll post that on our planner and it should be the same meeting information that we um use today. We use that for, for all of our regular meetings and special meetings and work sessions. But um, I'll, I'll kind of update that invite with some of that info for you, um, but in case that doesn't happen before then, um, it should be the same info.
All right. Sounds great.
All right. Um, okay.
Well, thanks for the, thanks for the work session today. I think we, we dove into a lot. There's still more to do, but we're making progress. So thanks for the time today.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
This looks so phenomenal. Thank you so much for the work that you've put into this. I'm very impressed with the work that you've gotten, gotten done for us. It's great.
Me too.
Thanks for the feedback. Awesome. Yeah, I think it'll, I think it'll really meet your needs once it all comes together. So yeah, look forward to working more next week.
Awesome. Thanks, Catherine. Thanks, everybody.
Hey, thanks.
Bye.
Bye-bye. And nine oh two, we'll adjourn.